Not that bad.
So just for recording purposes, we did call the meeting to order at five oh seven shortly before I started recording.
So slight increase, pretty minimal. Kind of based it off last years, the rent house a little hard to follow because the categories were a little different in it all, but whatever. And if I add it up right now. If you look at it, I'm under budget this year by quite a bit, but that's kind of on purpose at this point because I know this. The money's tight, so I, I, I. I have a plan on buying some gear, but. We gotta figure out how that's going to work before we do Jeanette's been. Been keeping me pretty informed on that stuff, so hopefully. Hopefully, hopefully. So one. One of the things, if you look under the chief salary, it's increased a little bit. And it's not per hour. What I'm looking for is maybe like five more hours a week of. Of time, I'm running out of time doing four job positions at twenty hours a week. So I did put in for twenty-five, just hoping to maybe, maybe. Get caught up a little better, um, and the part-time I always pretty much the same, but obviously put on six E M Ts this year, so that may be slightly different. I think the total thing was, I think I figured it was maybe like six, seven percent difference. Which is hard, it's hard to. Kind of hard to write a budget this year, really not, not knowing, what's that?
Your gear replacements really not that bad.
No, it's not really, um.
I don't mean to be different about it, but haven't you been replacing gear and?
We have, but I try to buy a couple sets a year and that's a couple sets a year.
Okay.
It's that expensive.
Yeah.
It's like three, it's over three thousand dollars a set now.
Yeah.
So yeah, I try to buy a couple sets a year and just stay ahead of it, so we don't wind up.
Right.
Having to buy a lot, um. Air packs were obviously good on that was huge getting the new packs.
Yeah.
That saved us a lot of maintenance and stuff there, um. I, I did mention to Jeanette today, we obviously don't know on the electric, I maybe the solar thing's gonna pay. That or whatever, but um, we just decided to just put it in there at this point and whatever.
The year, so most of the electricity would be generated in the summer and less in the winter.
Yeah, but you get credit, right? Kind of, don't they do like a credit system?
No, it's actual.
Ah.
So.
Well, it's actual, but then what you don't use, you get a credit back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, but um.
So we don't know where we're gonna come out.
So I know residentially. Cause mine didn't get put in until July and the thought was, you know, it should be a wash, but the first year it may not because I missed half of the summer.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, come, come winter. It'll be like my electric bill this past month was like nine dollars, nine or ten dollars.
So.
But come winter, it's not gonna be that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, so we may, we need to think about, we might wanna.
Yeah, I put it in there anyways.
Something for electricity this first year as a transition.
It runs about that a year.
Okay.
We're through the end of August, we're at like eight hundred for electric, it's pretty cheap. At the station, so, so I did put it in and if it doesn't get used, obviously, then I guess it's.
Yeah.
Whatever, um, cause I'm not really sure. The heat, we kind of figured it was gonna be fairly close. Um, because we have a buy, a pre-buy on that for a set price, so. Um, cause you can't really tell, it depends how cold winter is, right?
Well, it is gonna be a cold.
Yeah, so who knows, right?
Right, you don't know.
So I left that as it was, um. The vehicle maintenance, that's hit or miss, I mean, who knows, um.
How are we doing with vehicles in terms of like long-term planning?
Pretty decent, um, the only one, the next one that'll get replaced at some point would be a tanker. Um, one to get an automatic and two to, it's just. Our oldest piece, the rescue's in good condition, the engine's in good condition. The engine was just cer- recertified, pump tested, recertified, passed everything.
Yeah.
So I think that's good for quite a while, the expedition's only a couple of years old, so. Vehicle wise, we're not too bad, we're doing pretty well on vehicles overall, but a tanker would be if we could ever get a grant somewhere or something maybe or.
And how, how many years are you thinking? How many years?
Um, I'd replace it whenever I could, but we can get by with it for a few more years. I mean, it's certainly usable and we can get by with it for a few more years if. If we have to, we'll, we'll search around a little bit and see what happens. No, we haven't, I mean, obviously we have a capital reserve. Fund that we have for equipment replacement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't even know what's in that at this point, but.
Who write the vehicle one?
Yes, and one for EMS supplies, so, um. He, I, 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 I definitely wouldn't buy it unless we could get a grant that paid for most of it at this point. I mean, we can get by with what we have.
They pretty pricey too, are they?
Um. Three fifty. Range, something like that, yeah, everything is, trucks aren't cheap anymore. God, used to be able to buy a truck for. Pretty reasonable money. Oh, God, their new engine was like almost eight hundred thousand. Berlin just got a dripped out ladder truck, I think was one point six million. Yeah, yeah, fire equipments, Whitefield's new engines, all built. Pretty basic truck, I think that one was five fifty something or. Yeah, so, but we're in good shape, the engines, the engines in really good condition and I think that's got quite, that's got a lot of years left. In it, so, um, and we built that whole, we built that whole truck back in the day completely equipped for two hundred and sixty-five. So you wouldn't even, you couldn't buy the truck for that now, you know, so, um, so yeah, we're very fortunate there. Um, I mean, we operate, you know, I mean, we're operating in the eighty thousand dollar range for all the calls that we do, I mean. Towns are spending, even small towns are spending half a million dollars in budget. I mean, look around at what these towns are spending for just for fire service, I mean, we're really, we're really at the cheap end of the scale. On all of that, so, um. And seems to be going pretty well, we put on, like I said, new E M Ts this year, which was awesome. Um, so there's been some growth there.
So you could talk about personnel and all your positions, is it time to get somebody else to help you do some of the?
Um, it's time to look at. Who's gonna step into it next, but that's gonna be a big question mark.
Okay.
So it's still a question mark. As to.
Whether one person holds all the jobs or.
Yeah, it's. It's hard on some of the stuff to, to, unless you just. You know, I mean, obviously somebody else could be a health officer or somebody else could be some of the other positions, but. In the past, it hasn't worked, nobody's wanted them. Um, the health officer position I got after they was gonna hire a guy out of Whitefield because. Nobody in Dalton would take it, so I stepped up and took it, um, so, um. The, some of the smaller stuff, I mean, the, um. Jeanette was generous on the signs, we just did all those signs and she stepped up and pretty much. Ran the whole thing, got the volunteers to come in, put them all together and so a lot of that stuff I'm able to hand off. Some of the chore type stuff.
Okay.
Um, the thing that kills me is the paperwork, the reporting and the meetings and all that type of stuff. Is, is where the time comes in and of course now, um, and we discussed it today, you know, it used to be. A health officer, you just raised your hand, I wanna be a health officer, now you gotta be certified, you gotta do classes. Um, do training X amount of training per year, so it's like everything else in the world, all these positions are becoming more and more.
There's more, there are more involved.
Yes.
Have people who are qualified.
Yes, you have to be qualified to do the stuff and of course that also makes it harder for. Other people to step into it because when they find out, you know, I might be a health officer, but I'm not gonna go to school for. Hours on end to get certified to do it and so it makes it harder to do that.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah, I don't know, I don't know. Um, it's just a preliminary thing, I mean, obviously, once you get everything put together and whatever, we can. We need to change it a little bit, we can, but I just wanted to get something together to get started.
No, we wanna get started too.
Yeah.
Question for you about capital reserves. Cause I was remembering we had equipment one, the vehicle one, and what I'm seeing is we have an EMS emergency vehicle, maintenance, repair. So that has like, um, little under ninety-four hundred dollars.
Must be EMS equipment, it should say, right?
EMS emergency vehicle, there is an equipment one, maintenance and repair, it has over, you know, about nine thousand, nine, reset, three sixty-five. Then we have a fire department equipment. Police slash fire, that's got fifty-eight thousand in it.
So that's a vehicle one, the other one's equipment.
I was gonna say, yeah, so they're worded.
Whether the report is mislabeled.
Yeah, kinda.
Or whether.
The fifty-eight would be the truck, the fire.
Fifty-eight's the vehicle.
Vehicle replacement, yeah.
And the other one's the equipment, the smaller one is the equipment.
So we need to make sure that.
Yeah.
Just use the trust fund.
They'll ha- they'll have to see if they can change it, cause that's in D R A's system, that report.
Yikes, okay.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, yeah.
I mean, I think, if not, we need a warrant article to change it, so it's clear.
Yes. Yeah, and some of that, some of that too, like that vehicle one, you have to kind of leave. You have to kind of leave some money there and leave it kind of open because it's the kind of thing where if you lost something big in one of the trucks.
Yeah.
That would be your only source of money to.
But that wouldn't even come.
To fix it, no, 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 that's not gonna replace anything.
Right.
Um, we only put like ten thousand a year into the thing, so it doesn't. Uh, even, even by the time that we look at buying another vehicle, it's either gonna be a grant based thing or it's gonna be a. A financing thing, it won't be enough. Yeah, exactly.
We're gonna have to do a bond.
Yeah, exactly, but like I said, I think, I think we're pretty good overall and whatever.
And so you think that forty-five hundred is enough for vehicle maintenance?
It has been so far, we've been very fortunate.
Okay.
With that, it's just like I said, it's hit or miss, I mean, obviously, if you lose a transmission or something. Then you're gonna spend some money.
We're gonna go, then we might need to go into the.
Yeah, let's hope we don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see that happening. Um, I don't know, although I gotta tell you, the new, the new vehicles aren't what the old ones were, they're, they're not the same. It's, yeah, yeah, I can tell, in fact, I said that to Debbie up at the Ford garage, I said, this, this expedition's nothing like the old one. I mean, it's, they, every year they get cheaper and cheaper in the way they're put together.
Did they have more electronics that can go wrong?
And electronics, stupid, the electronics is crazy, crazy. I mean, I, yeah, I don't know, I mean, it's nice, I guess, some of it's nice, but. Um, a lot of it can get expensive too, so. Um, but yeah, no, I think we're, I think we're doing pretty good, I hope I have. A little bit of time left in it, obviously, at some point, I gotta. Think about how much longer I'm gonna do it, but as long as I'm healthy and still going here, I guess. We'll be here for a little bit longer, I gotta do something, I can't sit home. And do nothing, so.
Okay.
Sometimes I wonder two o'clock in the morning if this is like the best choice, but, but whatever, overall, it's been good. We got a good group of people now, which is, which is really awesome, eighty percent of what we do are EMS calls and. Having some new EMS people's huge, just huge, I was doing all that.
reduces a burden on everyone.
Yeah, I was doing all those alone at one point in time, pretty much, and it's, it's gotten.
Well, that's the.
It's gotten a lot better.
Too, that.
So.
More calls, right?
Um. Yeah, the call volume's about the same, it stays fairly consistent, um.
What happened with that collaboration, um, to do like preventative calls, the collaboration with the hospital?
Littleton is doing some of that, um. They haven't involved much of the local. Stuff, it's more a group out of the hospital that's coming out and just following up on some of these people. Um, but I don't know how much of that they're really doing, I think home health is doing. The bulk of it, like Carol's.
Yeah.
One of the ones out there and home health is out.
Okay.
In the community, big time.
Cause you talked about a program.
Yeah, and we haven't gotten too involved in that, really, I don't know. Um, home health has been, that's been pretty good in a way because. A lot of these people, they get them into this hospice program and once they're in that program, they monitor them.
Mm-hmm.
And when they pass away, the nurse deals with it, so the ambulance isn't getting toned.
Yeah.
To all of this, so that has helped quite a bit. Um, as long as the money holds out, that's the other question. In all of this stuff is, you know, if we cut Medicaid and Medicare and all that stuff, are these programs gonna be funded?
Yeah.
Um, so far, so far they are, but I mean, it's nothing for Carol to visit, you know. Eight people, eight different families in a day and there's a bunch of them. Working under that program, so there's a lot of people out there in their houses.
Yeah.
That are getting care that is saving EMS from a lot of it.
Yeah.
Um, so that, that is good, um. Yeah, we're very old society, I mean, it's, you know, we're, we're there, you know, and. So, yeah, I. I don't know, EMS is busy, EMS is always busy, um, we're fairly fortunate up here, some of the departments are having a heck of a time. Just getting people, I mean, it's a real issue. Even the big paid full-time departments, it just doesn't pay a lot and people don't wanna go out and do that type of work, young people don't wanna. Be stuck in an ambulance for twenty-four hours non-stop. Getting beat up for a wage that they could make at McDonald's and it, it's, it's a huge issue across the country. Um, I was very surprised, we were down in Delaware. On vacation there and I was really surprised at how many. Of the fire departments in big areas, I mean, good-sized cities are all volunteer.
Oh, really?
Yeah, sixty-five percent of the departments are still. There's a lot of volunteer, a lot of volunteer departments still out there.
Cause I remember as a kid, Littleton was volunteer.
Oh, yeah, yeah, Littleton. Littleton now, I mean, they're, they've got a big issue with overtime and callbacks and. When I started doing fire and EMS, Littleton had like sixty people on a call company. You call them for mutual aid and they send you twenty people and still be covering their town, they, they had a heck of a volunteer department. And that's all pretty much gone away now.
It's all aimed.
But sometimes. Sometimes the mix can be a little bit tough too, a lot of the call people. Don't always work real well with the full-time. Departments and it, it, they've kind of, I don't know, most of the departments that have gone full-time, it seems like the call companies have dwindled.
Yeah.
Considerably so, um. I don't know, it's, it's, it's a problem countrywide, but hopefully, hopefully people keep stepping up because these small towns can't afford. Can't afford full-time fire departments.
Yeah.
You know, and all of that's tier-two retirement, so you know what that's like. So you start, you start hiring firefighters.
Yeah.
You might not have to pay them a huge salary, but the retirement is, is huge. Um, and for a small town, it just becomes unaffordable, so. Hopefully, we can keep this going the way it is for. A good number of years and keep it so it's affordable and. Most of the people in the department are, most of them aren't there for the money, obviously, they're, you know, it's nice, they get a few bucks to. Basically what they, I think what they get basically probably buys their gas to respond, you know, I mean, it's, it's piddly money. Um, they're certainly not there for the money, you know, most, most of the people are there for the community and.
And helping.
And helping out, so yeah, so that's, you know, that's really awesome. So, yeah, um. I don't know, so far, so good, we'll, we'll hope it keeps moving along like it is, we do help Whitefield. With the ambulance and stuff, we run there sometimes, help them out in return, they've. Given us a pretty reasonable contract, their contract is way under what we probably should be paying. And every year, they just kind of give us this really smoking deal and we help them.
Still paying like.
Like twenty grand a year.
It went to twenty.
Yeah, probably should be about fifty, so, yeah, they, they've, they've really stepped up and been very, very. Receptive to us helping them out and so it's worth it, it's worth it to do that, um. I do help out Whitefield on some of their fire calls, Mossy's been laid up and stuff, but I do not. The town of Dalton does not pay for that, if I go on a fire call in Whitefield, unless it's a toned. Mutual aid call, I don't get paid for that.
Okay.
Through Dalton, so I'm, I'm, I'm helping them out, but I'm not getting paid.
And like the Lindenville brush fire would be a mutual.
That's a mutual aid call.
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll get paid.
Then they're available for us when we need them.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
How's Mossy doing anyway?
Um, I think his hot thing is good, he had a shoulder. Operated on or something, so he's been out recuperating with that. So he hasn't been, he's, I think he's doing some paperwork and, and stuff, but not, not going on the calls, he can't lift. With the shoulder and stuff.
Got restrictions anyway.
I, I would imagine, yeah, I would imagine, and I don't know how that works, I assume he must be under the state insurance.
Yeah.
And so they probably, I imagine they tell them.
Yeah, it's like ten pounds, I think.
Yeah, yeah, what they're gonna do for how long and all that type of stuff. So he's been, he's been laid up with that, Alan's kind of busy this time of year because of the, he works for the forest fire. Department there, so they're out working every day, so. Yeah, so I go help him out on some of their fire calls and stuff, but I don't mind, it's something. It helps us out in the end and like I said, it doesn't cost the town anything, so. If anybody's saying gee, I see Ron on a Whitefield fire call, I'm not getting paid by Dalton, so. Whatever, right? It's not about the money anyways, but, um.
I don't think I would complain about that.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Saving lives.
Yeah, or some people, some people probably would.
Oh, there's, there's no question.
Yeah, some people probably would, but whatever.
You know, the recent reciprocity is important.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, um, we work with Lunenburg. Fairly close, they've been a good neighbor, Whitefield's been a real good neighbor. So, um, yeah, I mean, we, we rely on them too, so. Um, there's been times that they've, that they've really helped us out too, so.
Yeah.
Um, it's all, it's all worth it, small communities working together, so.
So anything else we should know about in terms of the budget?
I don't think so, like I said, the last year's was. What, over seventy-five, this one's eighty, so it's.
Went up like five thousand.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I tried to keep it as reasonably as I possibly could. Um, I tell people, I pay taxes too, so whatever we can do to, to keep them down is huge, I mean. Hopefully, I don't, I don't know.
I haven't checked. The official inflation rate recently, but it's over three percent, isn't it?
I try not to pay attention to the news.
So depressing, oh my god.
I mean, we'll have to, um, you look at all the budgets, it might have to come back to you.
Yeah, yeah, no, it just gives us a.
But this at least.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, a starting point and I assume. Unfortunately, a lot of them may go up a little bit just because.
Inflation's going.
I, I, but you can't, I don't know, it's hard to read right now. When I order stuff, I can't ever tell. I, I don't know, it's, you know, is it gonna be a tariff on it, is it, is there not, is it, you, you just never quite. You never quite know until you order it exactly where it stands right now, it's.
Certain things that you think wouldn't be affected, you look at it and you're like, I could swear I paid half that price just last week.
It's very unpredictable, I guess, it's, um, so I don't know, I try to shop around as best I can. But at the same time, I, I mean, I've got people I've dealt with for years that give us good service, so. That's kind of important.
Yeah, it is.
Um, you know, um, one of them's been, the Ford garage has been excellent with us as far as. You know, if I have an issue, they'll be six weeks behind and it's like, get it up here and we'll take care of it and. They've really gone out of their way to stand behind that, um. I P S, I order a lot of stuff from, they're just, they're just super to deal with, they, they. Give me a good break, but on top of that, their service is phenomenal.
Yeah.
So, and that goes a long way, so you have to be careful, you have to look at that.
Absolutely, and volatile.
Yeah, exactly, sometimes you can pay more in the long run.
Yeah.
You know.
Cheap stuff, it just wasn't.
Yeah, so I try to put a little effort into all of that and make sure that. That we're getting what we should be getting and that people are standing behind us, which they seem to be, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Okay, I don't think I have any more of those things.
I don't know if Adam, Adam's in the tanker, so he.
Adam was really sick when he was in here earlier, so. I hope that he's wearing a mask and that someone takes the can of Lysol and sprays the heck out of that tanker, cause. He came in here with his sweatshirt over his mouth and gloves on and I said, yeah, please, you can leave now, cause he, no, he was, he.
Yeah, he's like I am, he's still working.
People in the area have got had COVID recently too.
Oh, so I asked him, I said, have you taken a COVID test? And he said, no, but it's probably COVID, and I'm like, then you shouldn't be working. You should go to the urgent care and have them do a flu test and a COVID test and you shouldn't be around people.
Infecting everybody, so he's not coming in tonight, right?
No, he is not.
My cousin got COVID and he went to the doctors and he told him, he says, it's really bad this year. Because you will be all right if you go home and do nothing and drink fluid for five days.
Yep.
But if you push and push, it can be, it can be fatal.
And that's what he said, he said he's been sick for almost a week and I was like, well, have you been taking care of yourself? I mean, uh, when your body says you're sick, you gotta.
Yeah, they don't.
Give your body what it needs and your body will take care of you.
I'm not good.
Get in and my, get my vaccinations.
I'm not good about that.
Well, anyways, this was good, thank you.
All right, awesome, I'll go see what's going on and I think Jeff was gonna go and relieve Adam, so I'll go see if that happened.
Tell him to bring some Lysol with him.
So hopefully, yeah, we're so exposed to that stuff on a regular basis.
Yeah, but. At least you're not doing all the P P E like you had to.
Oh, God, that was horrible. And at the end of the day, I don't think it amounted to anything, to be honest with you.
Well, but at that point, nobody knew.
Yeah, exactly, it was this whole.
Huge.
We still got, I still got, I don't know how many fricking boxes of, of masks I got over there.
Yeah.
I mean, just boxes and boxes and boxes of them and they just.
Yeah, I've got that and hand sanitizer.
Oh, it's, yeah, hand sanitizer, we got tons of that, they, they, they were handing that stuff out, just.
Yeah.
Trying to get rid of it and.
Just trying to keep it under.
Oh, yeah, and then we went from that to, oh, well, throw on a mask and go to work and. It, it just all changed, the whole thing changed, uh, you know, I don't know, I mean, we're.
Like that is, you know, it's so new, you're just, you're just trying to figure out.
The problem with all of that stuff is I tell people, I rode around for two years in an ambulance with sick people and never got it. My brother-in-law came home for my daughter's wedding and brought it with him and everybody in the family got it from him. And here I had spent two years riding in an ambulance and never got it, so you just never know, it's just.
Different strains.
It's hit or miss, yeah, it's very hit or miss and, you know. I get the flu like once every five years, maybe if that, you know, and usually I just keep working and. It goes away, I feel better if I keep working, if I get sick, I feel better if I keep moving.
To a point.
I don't feel good laying or if I lay around, I just think about it, I can go over in the garage by myself. And just, and just work and I feel better if I just stay busy.
Actually, getting outside always makes me feel better.
Yeah, yeah, I just can't lay around, I can't lay, I mean, if I'm sick to lay around, man, I just can't do it.
I mean, I grew up where, you know, we just kept going like, you get, a cold gets better in a week if you treat it or seven days if you don't treat it.
Yeah.
My dad's attitude.
Yeah, that's kind of mine.
When I worked, I realized that if I started feeling a cold coming on, if I stayed home and rested. I didn't get it.
Yeah.
You know, and I didn't infect everybody in the office.
Yeah.
So I changed my attitude.
Yeah.
And learned.
Yeah, I always worked alone, so that was nice.
Yeah.
And I just go down to the garage and.
Yeah.
Hang out and work and if you're gonna take a day off, you wanna do it when you're feeling good, not when, not when you're sick.
I know, but that's why, that's why sick leave policies are there.
Yeah, but. You can, you can use those days when when you're feeling good.
Well, you know, you're not supposed to.
Yeah.
Doctor's visits, things like that, yes, but just.
Go to the doctor.
They tie it off, that was a little sick indication, because it. It's harder to say than that, but.
I'm, I'm.
It rolls up with this.
I'm a really bad patient, Carol will tell you that. And go to doctors.
Thank you, Ron.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Excellent.
Have a good one.
Good. Did Jeff go over there, Mike?
He was over for a little bit and then I.
He was gonna call Aiden and then.
Right, I ended up, uh, going to get my truck.
Okay, so maybe he, I'll catch up with Jeff and see if he went over there and when we meet him. All right, awesome.
So for. Executive wages, I didn't change that. I went up slightly for technical service and advertising just because Zoom, we had an increase in the Zoom price. Um, Adobe is the same right now. Host wins is the same right now. Our web service is the same right now, but. Um, I could see having some small increases there. Everyone's increasing. Um, printing, I went up slightly. Um. Our printer, um, RC Brayshaw has been really good to us over the last three years. They've not increased price. We did pay a little bit more last year because we did the color cover, but I'm sure it's coming, so, um. I'm just trying to.
Try to anticipate it.
Anticipate it. Um, dues and subscriptions, um, we've spent almost six hundred. We had a budget of two twenty-five, so. Um, I just, I went up to three fifty.
I mean, should we be doing, should we be budgeting six hundred or?
I don't think so. Um. I think in some places, some things could probably be coded somewhere different. It's not that it doesn't really fit under dues and subscriptions for executive, but it. Could probably also go under financial admin or town clerk or there's some some dues or subscriptions that are kind of. You know, kind of a, a larger umbrella and cover, so. Um, executive office supplies. Um, I just increased that to one fifty. Uh, we've had in two increases in postage. Um, so I try to also spread that out because we've got financial admin, town clerk, and then we've got the executives, so. I try to share the wealth in there. Um, and executive other charges and expenses. Uh, increase that by twenty-five dollars again, just because everything is increasing and I thought twenty percent wasn't a lot. So that went from forty or seventy-four fifty to eighty-four thirty-four. Um, town clerk, permanent position, I did not change that. That's an average of nine hours a week. Um, election worker, workers, we have three elections, I believe, next year. So that increased.
And we had only the.
We only had one this year.
This year, yep.
Yeah. So I increased that. Um. Advertising and technical services, um, again, I I increased that by fifty dollars, just. All newspaper ads, everything is increasing.
Yeah.
Um, dues and subscriptions stayed the same. Town clerk office supplies stayed the same. Town clerk supplies other, I cut in half. And then town clerk election, uh, I left at thirty-five hundred. I did reach out to the secretary of state to find out about the tablet. Whether they were going to be giving those to the towns or not, and I've not gotten a response yet.
Cause I thought I saw something where they were giving them to the towns, but the towns had to pay for programming for the municipal elections.
Well, that's what HB, that's what, that's what it was in the spring.
Bill said, right? Did that bill pass?
N- n- no, no, no. Well, yes, that bill passed, but that was the towns having to provide. The one for all. Not in the bill was the state saying, hey, we're looking at replacing all of our tablets.
Okay.
That was me that you heard that from. It was in the spring and that's why we had it in the budget for this year. Cause we were supposed to hear in July or August, but we've still not heard anything. So I reached out to them saying. Hey, are the towns getting the tablet, your old, the state's old tablets, or do we have to purchase one in order to be compliant with this bill?
Okay.
I haven't heard back yet.
Okay, cause I thought I saw something on one of the NHMA updates, but.
Well, now, so now there's a new bill. That is in legislation for this year's docket, docket, the twenty-five, twenty-six docket. Saying that towns will not be required to provide the one for all voting tablet unless someone in town. Writes and asks for it. Specifically.
I'm sorry, that's crazy.
We've never had anyone use the tablet. Since I've been here, no one has ever used the tablet. They go in there, they use the light. They use the magnifying glass. They, someone sits in there with them. No one has ever used the tablet for the ballot to be read off to them or to print their tab, or print their ballot, ever. So.
Is it because they don't know that it's available? They don't know how to use it or?
No, I just.
Isn't necessary?
I just think it's not necessary everywhere, maybe in a higher population place, but. Anyone in town that needed help voting, they bring someone with that helps them vote, or there's one woman who can't. Can't see very well, so like I take her the ballot and read it to her and she fills it out. Or she has her helper there to do it while I wait and i- it's just people figure it out, you know?
Yeah, okay.
I don't know. Um, so town clerk, um, subtotal went up twelve percent. Financial admin, um. Our bookkeeping and our auditor, um, we're gonna be slightly over the budget. Um, this twenty-four, nine thirty-six that we've spent is only through August. And our bookkeeping has taken a little bit more time than I think we expected. We now. Save a data file for all of the town clerk tax collector stuff that goes to the bookkeeper. So she's not having to sit there and do the data entry off of the day sheets. So I'm hoping that that goes down, but that doesn't mean that the auditor costs won't go up. So it looks like the auditor costs go up slightly, like ten to fifteen percent each year, so. I put an extra ten percent on there.
Is it time to just check prices with other auditing firms? I mean, this one was, they were pretty much the same when I evaluated them a few years ago.
We can.
So I'm not sure there's a lot of benefit to that. I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, it never hurts to go out there and ask. Um. I, I don't, I don't know if we would see a big difference in price or not.
I don't think we would, but I'm just.
I don't think so either. I mean, he does a decent job for us and it's under ten thousand dollars to do it.
Familiar with the town, so that. Makes it, probably saves us money in the long run.
Yeah, I mean. Um. And I'm not saying his price will go up, I'm just saying everything's going up, so who knows if that's gonna stay the same or not. Tax collector fees stayed the same. Um, tax collector wages stayed the same. Again, it's an average of nine hours a week, which is, is high. I've been. Less than that. Um, except for when we're doing tax rate setting and tax bills. Um, elected officials is zero. Town administrator stays the same. Treasurer went down a little, uh, doing the calculation for the salary. And then, um, the deputy comes in one time a month, so, um, I decreased that slightly. Professional technical services, other services, this is our computer consultant and our avatar so, avatar software and support.
Can I go back to the treasurer? Are we paying? Cause we used to pay basically a salary for the treasurer.
We did.
We paid on the, is, do we still do that?
We pay a salary to the treasurer and then the deputy only gets paid if she works.
Okay.
Yep. Um, computer consultant in Avatar, I went up one percent. Registry fees, um, I went down a little. A lot of the registry stuff that we've been doing is land use change tax and the. Taxpayer pays that fee, so I didn't want to go down too far because next year we'll have. Homes that are potentially up for deeding again, so, um, there's more things that have to be recorded with the registry. When that happens, so, uh, I decreased that by fifteen percent. Um, dues and subscriptions, um, I decreased that by six percent. Um, I'm done with my certification class, which was charged here, which was like two hundred and fifty or so dollars a year. Um, so. Should be able to save at least that much. Um. Office supplies and equipment stayed the same. Postage went up. Um, again, we're seeing increases in postage. One, one to two times a year. We've already seen two this year. And with all of the things that were required to mail out. Registered certified mail, return receipt, so on and so forth. It's costly.
And refresh my memory because you were checking into. Emailing tax bills instead of mailing them, but that doesn't work, right?
That does not work. Nope.
Can you just refresh my mind, why?
Our, the invoice cloud who does our online payments does not have the capability to do that through their system.
Okay. And is there another system that'd be comparable?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. It's not something that I've started looking into because there's a lot of other things to keep up with. So as things start to slow down there.
Is the same system?
A lot of other towns are using Avatar and Invoice Cloud, yeah.
Okay, does Invoice Cloud, is that part of the Avatar system?
Um. For us, it is, but I don't think it's. I don't know if Avatar uses any other online payment system. There's like this EV two dot gov or something, which I've not heard great things about. But I've not heard about any system that can actively email the, the bills.
That might be something just in your networking to.
Hmm.
To check on just in the future.
Yep.
Because, you know, we could say postage and.
Yeah, at the conference last week, I did not, I talked to all the different vendors and there wasn't anyone there who. Had that service.
Okay.
So. Um.
And in terms of equipment, I know back a few years ago, we bought a new, um, printer, you know, the big, or copier. Copyer printer, is that fine for a while? Do we need to plan on one, a new one in X number of years?
Seems to be working fine to me.
Okay. I think we bought that, we did not lease it, right?
Um, I'm not making any payments on it, so I'm assuming you bought it.
I think that's my recollection.
Yeah. Um, and then financial admin supplies, I decreased by twenty-five percent.
Okay.
So.
So overall, it's up two percent.
Two percent. Um, I didn't get anything, well, assessing, I mean, we've got our. Um, assessor who's twelve hundred dollars a month. And then we've got San Souci. That I, is plugged in here for eighteen thousand. I kept that here, um, because that's.
That might go down because we shouldn't have the under canvas again, right?
Well, he hasn't really done any assessing on under canvas because it's not. I mean, we did have some, but under canvas hasn't been developed yet, so.
But when it is, he'll need to do the assessing rather than KRT, right?
I would assume so.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe we have them both do the assessment or have, I I don't, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. And then. That also includes, um. Utilities, right? Some of the special stuff with.
Yes.
Okay. And that's been higher recent than you.
Yes.
These years.
Um, so that stayed the same. Um, legal services, I kept the same. We do have thir- currently have thirty-five thousand dollars in the capital reserve. For health insurance, um, we won't know until. Beginning or mid-October what the increase, if any, there will be. I was going to do the increase that they did last year, but then I started to look at the fact that. Um, we have two highway employees who are not on our health benefits, so. Um. I said, well, let's just leave it where it is for now until we find out when October eighth comes.
Now we can actually figure what it's.
Yeah.
Our current staff.
Well, eh, and I can ask those two employees, you know, are you looking at signing on? And let them know open, open enrollments December, so we should have a better idea of how to calculate that number. So for now, I just left it. Um. Social Security, Medicare, Workers' Comp. Those are all. Uh, well, Social Security and Medicare, I left the same. Um, Workers' Comp, we had a twelve percent increase last year. I haven't gotten anything from Primex yet. I would assume it's probably gonna go up, so I did the twelve percent increase that we had last year. Um. Other employee benefits. I was trying to figure out what this was. We've not had any cost posted to it, so I cut it by twenty-five or by seventy-five percent. I would think that if anything, we probably would have had costs posted to it by now.
Cause like our flexible spending account, is that a wash in a year?
That washes.
Okay, so we don't need a.
Yep.
Account for that.
Nope. So. I cut that by seventy-five percent. Um. And then the retirement, I left at forty thousand. It looks like we're not gonna hit that. Um, because obviously that's based on salaries, so.
Didn't we start it late? When did we start?
Well, we started it in September of twenty-four.
Oh, okay, so we have had a whole full year with this year, okay.
Yep. Um, so personnel admin decreased by three percent. Um. For planning board, I kept the same budget. We've had a lot of expenditures. Um, as far as services and advertising, but that's due to the high level of subdivisions we've had this year. And that money does get reimbursed to the town. It's just comes in on the revenue side under subdivision, so you wouldn't see it here.
That have been a little bit unusual, have been like the under canvas and then the.
Right.
Public hearing for the Keats subdivision.
The Keats, the Beans, the Haskins, the, yeah, we've had a lot this year.
And with Beans, it's been the subdivision, public hearing, the purchasing, selling the land, public. Hearing, you know, multiple ones, so.
Yep.
I think that makes sense.
Um, and then the planning and zoning supplies, I left it two fifty.
Did I ask you to?
They're in the box, markers.
Yeah.
They're in the box.
They're in, in a box, we're.
In the box, in the, in my office.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um. General, um, buildings, general maintenance. Um, permanent positions, I increased this since we're in-house doing the mowing now, so. Obviously, it's kind of a give and take. You gotta figure it out. I mean, I don't think there's been any mowing in three or four weeks. Cause it's so dry, so eh, I'm trying to say, okay, well, if we say it's gonna be ten thousand dollars, it's. It should be more than enough, even if we have a wet season and they're mowing every week. Um. So there is a large increase there. Um.
So if we spent six thousand thus far. Should be, we will.
We spent more than six thousand because we've spent, the cemetery pays a portion of that too.
Okay.
The cemetery pays us, has paid a small portion of that too.
Seventy-four hundred?
They haven't, no, they. I had to take the equipment. I had to take the. I had to take the equipment.
In there.
Yep.
Okay.
In, for the cemetery.
Nice. Did we get a gate and fix the fence?
Not yet.
Okay.
It's, it's in, um, it's in her budget for next year, so I'm assuming it's not gonna happen this year.
Okay.
Um. Most of, nope, most of that seventy-four sixty-three was actually equipment for the cemetery.
Cause equipment was probably these six, six, seven thousand, you know?
It was more than that, I think with the trailer, it was like twelve or fourteen. Um, so that seventy-four sixty-four doesn't include any labor, this sixty-one ninety-four is the majority. That's mostly labor, yeah.
Including somebody, okay.
Yep.
So you should be budget more than five thousand for labor?
No, because the cemetery is gonna cover some of that next time.
Okay, so you're gonna put a personnel line under the cemetery?
If I need to, otherwise I could just put it in repairs and maintenance, that's where we. I mean, that's where we billed it before because we were paying a vendor, but we can always.
Just put another.
Add a labor.
Okay.
Line, that's fine.
I mean, labor would make it cleaner.
Sure. Um. Yeah, she had five thousand dollars for mowing.
Okay.
In her. Um, so then electricity, I left it four thousand. Property services, other services, um, I left it at twelve thousand. That is forty-one ninety-four.
Electricity, that's for this building here?
Yes.
And we're leaving it like that because we don't know what the solar is doing yet.
Correct.
Right. And as we get to the final budget, we might wanna like cut it in half or something, all the electric bills, but. Seems like as a placeholder, that's okay right now, what do you think? See where we are in the budget?
That what?
Seems like a good placeholder right now.
Mm-hmm.
To budget the same as last year, but as we get.
Just to see where it stands.
Right, and then we can always cut it, probably cut it in half safely. But let's just, it's not bad to have some places where there's a little bit of.
Oh, I know, you're right, yeah, you don't know what. I know, you know, I stick it about the wintertime and how that's gonna work and.
Yeah, so the property services, other services, that would have been, um. Probably a good portion of the equipment from mowing. And um, other small items that we did here in the building.
Okay.
Heating and oil, we've.
So should that? Go down?
We were at twelve thousand, that did not include anything for the solar grant, so I would leave it.
Okay.
Because we have the moisture issue in the floor that we're not sure is gonna happen. We've got some work on the building that's gonna happen yet. Through the building committee.
Needing to hire a contractor to do the.
Tuck pointing and, yeah.
And the, portion of the moisture is probably the air handling system, which is.
Probably.
Huge.
Yeah. Um, heating, I left the same because, well, we haven't hit winter yet. Um, and then repairs and maintenance, I left the same. So there was a twelve percent increase there. The cemetery. Terry's numbers, um, the stipend is unchanged. For technical services and advertising, this includes uh, public notices. Mowing and survey.
So the survey, I know by the end of this month, we're supposed to make a decision on surveyor.
Correct.
Um, and if the mowing is under.
Part of the mowing is under building management.
So.
The other part is under cemetery.
Okay.
And actually, that should be down here. The twenty-three fifty is the fence. There. Um. So this is um, the surveying for Johns River and public notices, this is. The fence and gate repair and mowing, and then the three hundred and fifty dollars is for the cemetery flags.
Okay.
Um, so that one went down by fifteen percent. Insurance, um, property and liability, we had a fourteen percent increase last year, so I carried that over through this year. As a placeholder, police would be the same for permanent positions, that's their, um.
So we're not looking at any increase from state police?
Not that I've been made aware of, no. Um, other services, I think this is where we do the, um.
The dispatch?
The dispatch, so that's three thousand. Um, it did go up slightly from six something to seven something, so I took in to consideration that increase. So that.
Quarterly or?
Quarterly, quarterly, but they run on this, on the fiscal year of July first to June thirtieth. So that went up by three percent. Ambulance, I've not gotten word of any increase, so I carried that over by twenty and twenty thousand.
And Ron said twenty K for the ambulance contract.
Uh, fire wages, we already went over that with Ron. Public safety, this is our, um. Hazard mitigation plan that we're working on, so I don't know if that will be done. And we'll be able to pay the final bill by the end of the year. So as we get closer to the end of the year, if we find that we've not gotten the final report or the invoice, I'll plug in the balance. Of what'll be do there.
Okay.
Since it doesn't carry over right now, I think we can carry zero, but, um. I reached out to Jay to find out about the airport, so I'm leaving that open. As far as highway goes, uh, Adam stopped in today and said he wanted to use the same budget as last year. I did go through that budget, um, and did a calculation for the labor. Um, this would be uh, with Adam and Owen both getting an increase, I don't know if Jeff is slated for an increase or not. Um, but this would be their forty hours, what they would make. So you're looking at one fifty, one eight forty. And then I included thirty thousand dollars for overtime. Um, just because we never know what we're gonna get.
Okay.
Bob Wentworth is off that this year, is that correct?
Uh, I believe that Bob Wentworth was only working for us seasonally this year.
Right.
Correct.
Good.
Yep. Um, highway telephone stayed the same, medical services stayed the same, rentals stayed the same. Electricity stayed the same, heat and oil stayed the same. Um. Repairs and maintenance stayed the same.
So we spent a lot of repairs and maintenance, so we spent twice that much.
Yeah, I'm hope, I'm hoping that that's gonna start dwindling down now.
He's just been catching up on deferred maintenance on his equipment?
I think so, he'll have to speak to that, I'm just going because he said he wanted to carry what he had last year. I just said, there's no way we're gonna spend two hundred and nine thousand dollars on labor. Because we had mitigation work planned in there. Um, property services is street side mowing, so I left that in there. Dues and subscriptions, um, we, this is where we also code the um, transfer station licenses. So I increased that to two hundred. Maintenance and repairs, I kept the same, gas, I kept the same. Gravel, we have combined in the road materials, which I increased to fifty thousand. Taking into consideration, we've spent a lot more than that this year, a lot of that should be reimbursed by FEMA. Um, because any road that sustained top level gra- top surface gravel damage. Is covered by FEMA, so that huge amount that we purchased from Beatty, we should be getting. Some, if not most of that back, I just, Adam's just gotta give me the details so that I can submit for it. Um, salt, sand, shop supplies, liquid mag, I did not change. Repair parts, uniforms, machinery and equipment, I did not change. So, um, you've got a. Three percent decrease on highway because I increased road material and decreased labor essentially. Um, but he said he'll hopefully be able to make it to the next working session to go over it. Streetlights, I left the same.
Cause streetlights, um, will the solar offset that or not?
It should, I would assume that the solar will offset all of our electricity.
Okay, I just saw the streetlights is some different thing, so I didn't know.
Yeah, I would assume so.
Okay.
Um, for the transfer station, I left everything the same. I mean, we're kind of.
I think we're doing better in terms of revenue.
We are, we've been selling bags like crazy, and Sam at the store just bought five cases of bags. He's like, I can't, I can't keep them, and then he tries to get in touch with me and he forgets, so. Um, we're doing pretty good on bag sales.
Yeah, so probably our tipping fees are up if we're selling a lot of bags.
Um.
But it doesn't look that, look like it is, maybe not, okay?
Well, we're sell, we're paying less for the tipping fee, but we're paying a lot for trucking, so.
And that's part of, yeah.
Yes, that's part of the disposal and transportation. Um, sewer, I decreased the payments to Lunenburg. I don't know why we had twenty-three five, maybe we were anticipating it going up again, but. Right now, we're paying forty-eight seventy-two a quarter, so I decreased that.
It might have been, we thought we were gonna give one payment, that like five payments a year instead of four or something, cause the timing. Like we had, I know you had in January.
I think I thought it was gonna go up.
Okay.
We thought it was gonna, I think we thought it was gonna go up because of the, the system that we put in place.
More flow and.
Yeah.
Okay, we should probably touch base with them again, because we talked about some long range planning, you know, getting. The state agency to, to look at what we should be budgeting long range that we could include into our, um. Tax warrants, sewer tax warrants.
Yeah, and the state, that one gentleman left the state water bureau or whatever. And the other gentleman has not been as receptive, not, he's not reached out to us or anything either, so.
Okay.
Um.
But I'm wondering if we should just touch, you know, have another meeting with the Lunenburg group just to keep the relationship there and that communication open?
Okay, I'll get in touch with them.
Okay.
Um.
Making over here, so maybe we should go over there, you know, or at least offer.
Um, disposal, electricity stayed the same. We've already spent more than our budget and we haven't hit winter yet, so I increased that. Um. But the sewer pump station decreased by twelve percent.
What do we have for heat over there?
Propane.
Okay.
Which is expensive.
Yeah, it's got its own tank, right?
Yeah. Dog licenses, I kept the same.
On the revenue side, I saw that towns are not gonna be getting, is it dog licenses or? Oh, automobile licenses, the revenue is gonna go down because we're. Towns won't be getting a share of the inspections because it won't be inspections.
Excuse me, but I don't quite understand dog licenses.
That's the cost for the tags.
Okay, the people that come in wanna, they pay for their.
Yep, that comes in on the revenue side.
Right, so why is it going on the budget for the whole town to be paying for it?
Because you have to pay for it. You can't buy it if you don't have an appropriation for it.
The actual tags, we have to buy as a town.
Yep, we buy the tags as a town and then it's considered revenue on the other side. We keep like a dollar or a dollar fifty of each tag, and then the balance of that goes to the state. Department of Agriculture.
Correct.
The revenue doesn't show up on the budget side, it's com- two completely different reports. And then everything is mashed together with this formula that D R A does when they take the county, the schools and everything into account. And they say, this is what your tax rate is, this is just a precursor leading up to that. But we have to have it in the budget in order to spend it. Whether we get reimbursed for it or not. Um, the town is still getting stuff from the, from vehicle registrations. The state's getting more, the state is increasing their rates on some things.
Okay.
The town's not getting less, our rates haven't changed.
Okay, but I thought there was some piece tied to inspections, so the town got a piece of that.
I don't think so.
Okay, I might be wrong.
I don't think so, not that I'm aware of.
Pest control, you know, we never hired an animal control officer.
That's just, that's just what the account is called, it's dog license fees. That's what that is.
Okay, although I'm jumping down and.
Yep.
Thinking and that's health rather than, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's okay.
No, my luck, my.
We probably should hire an exterminator, but we don't.
We had visitors?
Oh, yes, we have visitors every year.
With the mice?
Absolutely, every year.
Yeah, house cat?
I don't know anybody that doesn't.
Sticky pads.
Well, they work great.
A cat, my cat's a good mouser, but I'm not gonna give her up.
Yeah. Um.
Just one or two a year.
Yeah. Um. The, the health services and the community action and the direct assistance, those are all welfare.
Yep. And our contribution to Tri County Cap and all of those, right?
Yes, that's all considered welfare, community, and I've not gotten the details from those people yet, I've reached out. And, um, I haven't gotten anything yet, so, yeah, so I left those. Um, I did increase this one just simply because we spent a little bit more over here.
Okay.
Um. Less there, we're still under budget, but, um.
And which one is a pure welfare?
Direct assistance.
Okay, so we only budgeted five thousand for that?
Yes.
We might wanna think about upping that for next year. Well, I'm just thinking with, with things that are happening.
Yes, I know, I keep, we've been.
Medicaid goes away.
Extremely fortunate, extremely fortunate.
Lot of the other.
Yeah. It is something to consider, I'm wondering if the other agencies are going to increase to try and absorb that, yeah.
So we'll have to see that in, but just keep that in mind.
Yeah.
To increase that.
Yeah, um. Rec supplies, we, we put in a hundred dollar budget, we've never really done anything with it.
It's just keeping that as a placeholder so we can spend there if we wanted to for.
Yep.
Whatever reason.
Library, they said that they wanted to give Doris a raise of three hundred dollars, so that's what that is. Um, so they went up three hundred dollars. Conservation commission said that they would stay within their budget of the same as last year, two thousand dollars. I did not put anything in debt service for principal, um, or interest, I'm hoping that. We get money fast enough to pay out, pay all that off this year.
For a tan, right?
For the tan.
So the equipment that we purchased last year, that's leased to Owen, so that that isn't under debt service, is that correct?
It is not.
Okay, so it's up under highway department?
It is.
So that's.
Under equipment capital outlay.
Okay, can you scroll back up to that, let me just for these. Okay. So it's basically twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six thousand apiece?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, and then we've got the solar array, which was approved via warrant article number ten. Um, I've gotten the invoices from Barrington Solar. So, um.
So we'll have to pay that, those, and then we'll get reimbursed.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Or we'll get reimbursed like ninety percent?
Yeah, it was like ninety-eight or ninety-three percent or something like that, yes.
Okay.
Yep, so right now, with some things not changed or not filled in, we're at. One million, one eighty-seven seventy-nine. So.
Which is less than last year's budget. I'm surprised, I thought it would.
Slightly less.
Be higher.
It is slightly less.
And the thing I think we need to talk about at one of our working sessions, and we're running out of time now, is, um, salary increases.
Yeah. So. I am gonna save this. Because. I don't wanna lose it. So, yeah, we're not, not in a bad position, um. At all, right now.
So if I may ask, uh, FEMA pays money that comes in, I mean, that they supposed to.
Mm-hmm.
Won't that offset this as well?
It doesn't offset the budget, it offsets the revenue, which plays into the tax setting, tax rate setting. Yes.
Okay.
We have to take into consideration that there, that money just goes into the general fund. And at town meeting is when it will be discussed or voted on by the townspeople. Where that money has to go, needs to go, whether we take the money that was taken out of the paving capital reserve and put it back there. Or whether we say, nope, we're gonna replenish, we're gonna take this amount and replenish the general funds. And this amount will go in capital reserve, otherwise it. The money will go into our unused fund balance, which can be used to lower the tax rate. But we also need to take into consideration that our unused fund balance includes any unpaid taxes. You know, taxes that haven't been paid, and that is also an emergency fund, as we found out last year.
We, we wanna replenish what we took out of it last year.
Correct, and we did get approval to, I think it was, use a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, but we only utilized like thirty-four. Thirty-two thousand, something like that, so luckily, we didn't have to dip into it more. Um, than, than that. But, um, yes, I'm working closely with DRA, I'm trying to figure all those things out. And, um.
And the other thing with FEMA is some of the reimbursement may not come in until. January or later, next year.
Right.
Cuz we've got, so far, we've gotten forty-some thousand plus, what was the second?
Six, uh, sixty-nine-nine.
So almost seventy thousand, so we've gotten about a hundred and ten thousand.
And I've submitted some additional paperwork, so we should be seeing another payment. For that, that was for the paving that was done on Harriman, and, um. I got some information from Adam that will allow me to submit more for the stone that we've paid to Beatty. Um, so there's that. Um, Blakesley Road, I checked today, Blakesley Road hit obligation, so. Once the federal government sends it to the state, then the state can pay us. The, their share of what we've spent on Blakesley. Um, I think we should be getting, for the work that's already complete, we should be getting about a hundred and eighty thousand. For that, we've got work to finish on Blakesley. Um, the headwalls haven't arrived, those should be coming. First week in October, according to the gentleman I spoke with today, fabrication has just been really slow. Um. And I'll have my weekly update with FEMA tomorrow.
And with Smith Road done, we should be able to start processing the request for reimbursement for that, right?
Once that hits obligation and is awarded, yes. It's not been awarded yet. Yeah.
Yikes.
Yep.
It's a big one.
Yep, well, it's actually not. I mean, it's a big one because we've had to pay out the money.
Yeah.
But it's actually not compared to some of the other ones.
Okay.
So. Yeah. We've just gotta make sure that the work keeps happening, so we can submit the invoices and be reimbursed for what we're showing out.
Yeah.
So.
We got an angle table now?
We're still in our working session.
Spreadsheet up for budget. Um. If we can look at the, um, the fire EMT capital reserve funds, cuz I think those are. The, the title's changed.
I'll have to ask Sue. I don't have access to any of that. It's the, the, the trustees of the trust funds.
Yeah.
So.
I might have to go to DRA for.
Y- yeah.
Yeah, but I'm pretty sh- just looks like it's wrong to me.
Yeah.
So.
And it may just be called something weird, but the.
Yeah.
Detail is correct.
Might be, okay.
Yeah.
All right, we all set for now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I do have, and I didn't print it because the guy walked in with the proof. Of ownership of the property at the last minute. I do have, uh. Um, an intent to cut. If I go print it, can you guys sign it? I know I'm, it's six twenty-nine, but, um, he wants to start cutting on Thursday. Can I go print that really fast? I'll be right back.
We're still waiting for some of the members of the HCA.
And we're still live.
Okay. Should we move forward, waiting of the table back around?
Thank you so much again.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Made his life a lot easier.
Even nice for not having to use it.
Yeah. I guess you guys don't need me after all. The boss said I should come face him with any questions for mowing.
No, tomorrow. Not tomorrow.
Also for FEMA, um, I found out that they have a program that will reimburse the town for the interest. That we have to pay since we had to take out loan to cover the work, so that's something else I should get more information on. While you guys are signing that intent to cut, we also, um. Last week. You guys voted and approved to do the generator and the additional work needed at the highway garage. We've received the proposal slash agreement from Maine Electric, who's doing the electrical there. Um. I can certainly sign it, but since we had a meeting tonight, I figured someone from the board could instead.
These are the numbers we talked about.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. They did ask if we wanted any of the extras, like a cold weather package and, uh, something for CAT five, and. I said, right now, we're not doing any extras, we're just doing the generator.
Do we need the cold weather?
I don't, we don't have any extra packages on any of the generators we have now, I don't think so. Figured we just.
Move.
They wanna consider the cold weather.
I don't know what the price is. I don't have it here.
I don't know what it is either.
So maybe.
It'll be added on later?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it can. He said it can.
It can, okay. I make the motion that we adjourn. All in favor? Okay. I'm ready for the HCA committee.
Good night.